Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mr. Ward.
Uh, Mr. Ward, if you'll lead us in prayer and national prayer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Almighty God, we give thanks for the great blessings which have been given to Canada's citizens, including the gifts of freedom, opportunity, and peace that we enjoy. God has turned our celebrations into accountants and strengthened our awareness of our duties and responsibilities. Grant us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to preserve the blessings of this country, the benefits of all, and make good decisions, wise decisions. Amen.
And Mr. Yakubuski, can you lead us in full Canada, please?
Yeah? Oh, does it matter? Oh, maybe I don't need it. Let's figure it out. Okay. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. Through patriot love, in all thy son's command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Name, please, can you hear it? Mr. Hutton, have all the court certificates for the elected officials been filed with you?
Yes, they have been filed.
Thank you, and can you conduct your call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Counselor Doncaster?
Present.
Counselor Donahue?
Present.
Counselor Eamon?
Present.
Counselor Farr? Counselor Gibson?
Present.
Counselor Grunt?
Present.
Counselor Kingberry?
Present.
Counselor Love?
Present.
Counselor Gay?
Present.
Counselor Miller?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Peck?
Present.
Counselor Reimel?
Present.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Chadd?
Present.
Counselor Sweet?
Present.
Counselor Dismascooner?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we proceed. Members of County Council, during the month of December, I've attended six full days and eight half-days on county business. During the month of December, I've also attended many or a number of the inaugural meetings of the local municipalities, and thank you for that opportunity to attend these functions. It's a pretty significant time for a new council and a new head of council, and it's nice to see the excitement and the pride of the community and families at those events. On December 6th, I participated in the Valley Area's Radio Holly Jolly Radio Fawning. On December 8th, I along with Mayor Sweet, county staff met with the elected representatives from Mississippi Hills, Carleton Place, Beckwith Township, the City of Ottawa, and representatives from various community groups to discuss the Great Lakes Waterfront Trail and the potential for the continuation of the trail from Deep River to Ottawa. As part of this meeting, the group was very excited to hear about the counties' efforts to acquire the CP rail portal. On December 9th, I along with Mayor Sweet and the county renter staff met with the Honorable Maxine Bernier, Minister of Small, uh, Minister of State for Small Business, Tourism, and Agriculture, to discuss the GOCO, which is the government-owned contractor-operated process currently underway at Canadian Nuclear Laboratory facilities in Chop River. Minister Bernier, who also serves as a member of Treasury Board, was very interested in our presentation. On December 15th, I along with Paul Curtis, where the Community Future Development Corporation and County Renter Staff met with James Monder, the Chief of Staff for the Ministry of Industry, to discuss the local process as it's currently underway at Canadian Nuclear Laboratory facilities in Chop River. Both of these meetings were intended to inform the Government of Canada of the community's needs and how the six requests made in the report need be incorporated into the request for proposal process. Staff has scheduled another meeting with the Chief of Staff for the President of Treasury Board tomorrow. We're extremely hopeful that our ongoing efforts will bear fruit as the process unfolds and the federal government issues the RFP. Ultimately, it is our hope that CNL will become the premier in national nuclear research facility in Canada and continue to be an important asset in our community. Later this afternoon, I'll be taking a Christmas greeting for Kojiko. On December 17th and 18th, County Council will have two full days of orientation, which will include tours of our various facilities. On behalf of all members of County Council, I stand condolences to former heir of Laurentian Valley Jack Wilson and his family on the passing of his wife. I would like to thank CEO Jim Hutton for providing advice to myself as warden, and to all the staff here at the county for carrying out their duties day-to-day and with a vision towards the future. I look forward to working with all you again as warden in 2015. I guess I'm crazy in another way. This concludes my address for this session of County Council. Correspondence, Mr. Hutton?
There's no correspondence, Mr. Ward.
Darren, that's the first time in this whole year that I've gotten a day after reminding you of it today we have there. And I believe we'll call upon, I guess I vacate right now, don't I?
Uh, we can vacate after it's all paid office is settled by the Central.
Okay, we'll call upon Justice of Peace Moran, please.
Ward. If I may, Mr. Ward, for county councillors, as Justice Moran, who's minister's oath of office, I'd ask that you stand and recede in unison with Mr. Justice of Peace Moran. Sign your oath of office, and then Rose will pick them up, and Justice of Peace Moran will sign them as I will. Thank you very much.
As a member of the council of the corporation, the County of Ranfru...
Thank you very much, Justice of Peace Moran. Now, if you may, I want to take the seat of the County Renter's position. Thank you very much, Counselors. Pursuant to Section 17 of the County Renter Procedure by Act 8510, I clerk acting as presiding officer, call for nominations for wardens for the ensuing year that were filed with the clerk of the County Renter by the deadline of December 2nd, 2014.
And I have a nomination dated November 28th, 2014, moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Sweet, that Peter Eamon Reeve of the town of Ranfru being a fit and proper person to be warden of the municipal corporation of the County of Ranfru is hereby nominated as a candidate for the wardenship of this county for the ensuing year or until such time as his successor may be elected.
Thank you very much, Counselor Murphy. I would ask Counselors Murphy and Counselors Sweet to come forward and speak to their nominee.
Bob wrote his on the back of a cigarette pack, that's right. Peter's a great guy, thank you. I want to welcome all of our family and friends here today, our special guests. John, thank you so much for doing the anthem, and Justice Moran. To my fellow councillors and to staff, what an incredible day with so many new faces around the table. I'm sure that it's going to get very exciting. I want to, I'm very pleased to nominate Peter as Warden of the County of Ranfru for 2015. This will be Peter's third term as Warden, and I know he will continue to pilot this council with his fair and focused leadership. I have enjoyed the past few years working with Peter and getting to know who he is as a professional and as a person. Peter married his high school sweetheart, Alana, who is here today, and the two settled in Calabogie, where they remained until their move to Ranfru earlier this year. Alana is also an accomplished educator and has been Peter's biggest supporter during many of his activities and pursuits. He calls her his closest confidant and best friend. They are the parents of a delightful daughter, Lily, who decided to remain in school today, I'm sure not by her choice. She only got to come to one, right? Yeah, the first one, everyone else, yeah. Peter continues to be very active in his community, and over the last 20 years, has been involved with a number of projects. He entered municipal politics in 1988, when he was elected as a councillor, and sat on council in Calabogie until amalgamation in 2000. Peter became the head of council in 2006 and was re-elected in 2010. Working with the past council, Peter was an integral part of making changes and growth happen in Greater Madawaska. When Peter isn't traveling around the county as the warden or serving Ranfru as the new Reeve, he works part-time as a community mental health crisis worker in Ranfru County. In his limited downtime, Peter enjoys a bike ride and skiing, and he and his wife like to take day trips with their daughter. He explores and reads and asks a lot of questions, which you will all find out very soon. As many of you know, one of Peter's most treasured projects has been the formation of the Ranfru and Area Health Services Village. It is best known as a physician recruitment vehicle. Peter has been a driver along with the other three mayors and volunteers in this project, as it constantly proves its value to the community, and I can attest to that and thank all of you, especially in the last three weeks, knowing how important Ranfru Victoria Hospital is. Since arriving at County Council in the fall of 2006, Peter has served on all committees, including two years as Chair of the very complex and challenging Social Services Committee. In 2012, Peter became Warden, and as the head of County Council, Peter along with the councillors worked hard to develop a positive rela-, I should say, and staff, worked hard to develop a positive relationship with the province on the continued four-lane highway expansion on 17. The County of Ranfru has also steadily offered input and information on the Endangered Species Act, legislation on behalf of all stakeholders of our delicate economy. Council has also embraced a simple but powerful strategic plan, a commitment to the health of our residents through programs like our Community Paramedicine Program, in our partnership with the Health Unit, in seeking grant funding for new programs like the Healthy Kids Community Fund, and initiatives like Active Transportation. Peter continues to press our message with both the levels of government on numerous topics, whether it be broadband funding or legislation. He has spoken at conferences as the member of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus or through the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. He notes the county takes a strong stance and leads a role on informing the public on the GOCO process at Canadian Nuclear Laboratories, and we are working hard to express the needs of the community to the federal government and the potential operators. Peter works hard to spread the word in the county's, of the county's accomplishments and the great things we have to offer here. Whether it is his weekly appearance on a local cable show, promotion of events, or driving forward to creating the new tagline for the county, Peter constantly strives to promote and grow the influence of the County of Ranfru in all an effort to move us forward. Peter, today is my great pleasure to nominate you as the County of Ranfru Warden for 2015. It will also be my pleasure to work alongside you and the rest of this council this term to continue serving the residents of Ranfru County in an open and fair manner, and as you often say, in a manner that will continue to make Ranfru County a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Murphy, CEO, staff, members of County Council, Your Honor, Barry Moran, Justice. I sat beside Barry when I first came to council as some of, one of a mentor to me in the year 2000. It's nice to see you back here, former warden of the County of Ranfru. To all the special elected officials that are with us today, good morning. I see Colonel Louis LaPointe, Lieutenant Colonel Louis LaPointe from Garrison Petawawa, Got It Right Again, Garrison not the base, and CDO Bill Richards, John Yakubuski, and friends. I see also at the back a former, not a former, but the only honorary warden that is with us today is Fred Blackstein, and all of the other foundation builders that are in the chamber today, and that is, of course, the past wardens. Without them, this county would not be the county that it is. I certainly want to take this opportunity to endorse the motion and moving as the Second Air for Warden Eamon to be our leader and warden in 2015. Mayor Murphy has articulated some of the challenges that are ahead of us, and there are many, and I believe that continuity is absolutely essential to deal with these issues that face us going forward in 2015, and as such, I have no hesitation, none whatsoever, in seconding the motion for Reeve Eamon to be our warden again in 2015.
Thank you very much to the mover and the Second Air for Counselor Eamon. The above nomination being the only nomination for a position of Warden for the year 2015, filed with the clerk of the County of Ranfru by the deadline of December 2nd, 2014, I announce that we, Peter Kerr Eamon, is acclaimed Ranfru County Warden for this ensuing year. Now, with that said, the mover and Second Air is called Warden Eamon to the chair. Thank you.
We have a wardrobe malfunction, hang on.
Thank you very much, I'm a Third Second Air. I will now ask the wardens to take the Declaration of Office at office administered by Justice of Peace Moran and M.E.S. Park.
I, Peter Eamon.
I, Peter Eamon.
Having been elected to the office of Warden.
Having been elected to the office of Warden.
Of the County of Ranfru.
Of the County of Ranfru.
Do solemnly promise and declare that.
Do solemnly promise and declare that.
On behalf of the County of Ranfru.
On behalf of the County of Ranfru.
I will truly.
I will truly.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Exercise this office.
Exercise this office.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
I have not received.
I have not received.
And will not receive any payment or reward.
And will not receive any payment or reward.
Our promise thereof.
Our promise thereof.
For the exercise of this office.
For the exercise of this office.
In a biased.
In a biased.
Corrupt.
Corrupt.
Or in any other improper manner.
Or in any other improper manner.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest.
Direct or indirect.
Direct or indirect.
In accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
In accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth.
To Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth.
The Second.
The Second.
Or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
Or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration.
I make this solemn promise and declaration.
Conscientiously.
Conscientiously.
Believing it to be true.
Believing it to be true.
And knowing that.
And knowing that.
It is of the same force and effect.
In, it is of the same force and effect.
As if made under oath.
As if made under oath.
I would like to congratulate Warden Eamon, this is his third consecutive term as the Warden of the County of Ranfru. It's very nice today to see so many old faces. One thing that I regret lately is that I've not been able to keep in touch with as many of the people that I used to have such fond association with, and I'm glad to see so many of them here today. To returning mayors, Janice, Mayor Sweet, Mayor Stack, and I'm missing...
Mayor Murphy.
Mayor Murphy, sorry.
Okay, everybody forgot to mention.
Congratulations on your recent victories, and to all the new county councillors that are here today, I just hope that if your experience here was as good as what my experience was for the eight years I spent in these chambers, it'll be definitely the most satisfying experience. So I wish Warden Eamon, all county councillors, the very best for the year 2015 through to 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. And you probably were thinking that there were two Peters, Justice Moran called me Eamon, because that in Catalonian Larnar, that's how my last name is pronounced, but if I pronounce that on a regular basis across Ranfru County and in the prompts, I wouldn't get my mail. So I, I'm known as Eamon here and Eamon in Catalonian Larnar, just in case you notice that. So I'm buried among the four, well, I think it's my hot people, I think, and so it's known me a long time. Welcome, council, staff, honored guests, and members of the media. It's with much pleasure and anticipation that I address you today. Pleasure as you've asked me to represent our community inside and outside of our borders. Anticipation, as this will be an interesting and exciting time as we come together to work for the best interests of our community. I wish to thank my mover, Mayor Murphy, and Second Air Mayor, and former Warden Sweet, and all of County Council for bestowing this honor upon me. Takes a great deal of support to fulfill the role of Warden, support from council and staff, and the many welcoming, interested, and kind residents of the county. I've had the support from my family and friends throughout my life as I've acted as councillor, or head of council, or the warden, and as a community volunteer. I'd like to introduce my wife, Alana, as Jennifer noted, she's my friend and most trusted advisor. I'm just looking around for my mother. There was a chance of frozen rain, or freezing rain today, so I don't imagine she ventured to Calabogie, so I don't see her today. She's a very cautious traveler, so the first mention of rain, she wouldn't be making the trip. I need to make mention and thank my friends, the staff, and the former council members of Greater Madawaska, who have been most supportive in my last two years in this office, and I trust that Counselor McKay will take that back for me. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing Counselor Arlene Jamison, Treasurer Carrie O'Reilly, Fire Chief Dee Longtean, Director Kevin Hill, Director Mike Asselin, and Clerk Kim Bulmer. These are the new people who will be advising me, and they made me feel most welcome as I've transitioned into government in the town of Ranfru. I look forward to their support, their advice, and their ideas in the upcoming years, so thank you very much for being here today. In 2014, we worked on a number of important projects. The efforts of council and staff will continue unabated. We will continue and increase our efforts to facilitate a conversation involving both the federal and provincial governments to stress the need for predictable and timely twenty of Highway 17 through the County of Ranfru and beyond. The Predictable Twenty Program for 417 is absolutely essential for the future and necessary expansion and diversification of our community's economy and our ability to compete with the rest of Canada and Ontario. We believe Highway 417, as it extends through the Ottawa Valley, will bring interested companies, investors, visitors, and future residents to our many safe, affordable, caring, and welcoming communities. We have observed and documented the positive impacts the extension of 417 through and past Arm Prior has brought to that community and are closely linked to neighbor McNamara Site. The County of Ranfru will ask our friends and neighbors to continue to document the benefits in that area and in other areas on other 400-series highways, and advance our case with both levels of government about the importance of the Trans-Canada Highway and Highway 17 to Ontario into Canada. This critical piece of Canada's national infrastructure needs to be a priority, and the other levels of government need to have a mature and committed, long-term dialogue and partnership which sees the expansion roll out. Atomic energy in Canada, which is now known as Canadian Nuclear Laboratories, has a long time, has for a long time been a vital engine which drives our economy. We look forward to interaction and consultation with members of the community, and elected representatives, and CNL management and staff to ensure this continues. We expect, and our community expects, in fact, we challenge the federal government to act to ensure it remains the largest science and technology laboratory in Canada. The creation of a national science and technology laboratory at CNL will ensure Canada remains a tier-one in the nuclear nation. will ensure Canada remains a tier one nuclear nation. Before qualified bidders understand this. We at the County of Renfrew understand this. The staff at CNL understand it. Our community understands it. And our community knows the federal government needs to demonstrate their understanding by making that designation today. We do not want the designation to get lost as they embark on evaluating the bids using the local model as their template. The January 1, 2016 handoff to the successful bid is fast approaching. A 2015 federal election is looming, and it is guaranteed to distract all political parties as embraced the intellectual paralysis of wedge politics and possibly collapse it to a minority government. CNL, the Canadian Trucker Lab, and the staff are aware of the importance of this goal for being recognized as an opportunity. This is much more than a shutdown and a cleanup. CNL needs to be developed as Canada's National Science and Technology Lab and as a value of the primary growth hub for Renfrew County, Eastern Ontario, the Proppets, Ontario, and Canada. It remains a contention of this council, this community, that CNL is located here in the county, and it's the perfect community. We accept support and we trust their nuclear industry. We trust nuclear research. We trust the technology and the science. CNL and laboratories and the nuclear industry belong here. To move them or in any way systematically diminish them is to ignore the glorious and productive past of A.C.H.L. The significant present value and limitless future of CNL. Garrison Pedawala continues to evolve and grow and contribute to the safety and pride of Canadians. Generates incomes for many and opportunities to provide services with us for others and a strong group of volunteers who care about and build our community. The County of Renfrew and our many communities have always continued to have a strong emotional attachment with Garrison Pedawala. We wish to ensure the serving members and civilian employees know they have our committed and heartfelt support as they fulfill their role globally in terms of defending Canada and others and providing security and disaster relief. The recent addition of the Heavy Lift 450 Helicopter Squadron is illustrative of how the base continues to evolve to meet the challenges of serving Canada and Canadians. Last year, we extended a hand of welcome to the helicopter squadron members and their families and supporting civilians to the county. We look forward to the ongoing and mutually benefiting relationship with our Garrison Pedawala. The Endangered Species Act remains a significant impediment to the development and wellbeing of rural Ontario and Renfrew County. We have highlighted the problems, the increased costs, and significant work delays and stoppages for businesses in almost all economic sectors in our diverse community. We provided numbers and examples of lost opportunity in agriculture, in construction, in road building, and in land development. And also in new home construction, in forestry, in mining and tourism investment. On behalf of our community and our economy, we spoke of the job losses and the missed investment opportunities. Industry representatives, our partners, our staff, our neighbours tell us in many situations the ESA duplicates the requirements of existing acts, such as the Ontario Planning Act and specific forest management plans. We will continue to assist our partners as they educate the respective sectors and to join them when they speak to the Minister about the negative impact this act is having as our communities try to make an honest living. In 2015, I'll continue to receive nominations with regards to the Warden's Community Service Awards. Recently, I had the great pleasure with the support of council and on behalf of our community to award individuals and organizations for their outstanding commitment to making the County of Renfrew a better place to live, work, and play. We reside in a part of the province, the country, and the world empty by many. Our historic connection to Canadian history makes for their evolving social diversity, and the library arts community is second to none. Renfrew County residents are fortunate to share our community with the Ongamwas that they've walked in on. It is a treasured relationship which needs to be constantly respected and developed. We will through carefully foster partnerships with the Ottawa Valley Tourism Association and the various culture groups, work to properly showcase and further develop our unique attributes to residents and visitors alike. The County of Renfrew will continue to take an active role in healthy living by participating in a health promotion challenge with Landre County. I truly enjoyed the Silver Change Challenge.
Should be.
The Silver Change Challenge, which this year we won in both sections. So congratulations, everybody, you worked hard on that. The Silver Change Challenge has encouraged the use of our roadways, our trails, our hallways, and any natural or man-made infrastructure to increase physical activity along the social and community engagement. I look forward to June 2015 with enthusiasm and a healthy sense of improving. The Eastern Ontario Warden's Caucus sets priorities for the year in January of each year. As council will recall, the caucus has been very successful in completing our major projects and studies such as EOR and a cell gap analysis which is currently being undertaken. In 2014, a regional economic development strategy has been completed. You'll be hearing more of the strategy in early 2015. County of Renfrew's C.A.O., Jim Hutton and I will continue to support the efforts of the Warden's Caucus and ensure the concerns of the County of Renfrew and our community are duly considered. The Warden's Caucus has completed extensive review of social housing, municipal affordability, estate, municipal infrastructure, ratepayer affordability, and environmental services. Each document is filled with research and sourced figures and projections which you can utilize in your own decision-making. The lifting of the ties and the rails of CP and CM railways throughout Renfrew County was truly an unfortunate event. However, we've been working and will continue to work with our neighbours to turn this unfortunate event into an asset that will be of immense value to the future wellbeing of the residents of the County of Renfrew. With regards to asset management, this year, we'll see the County of Renfrew initiate a comprehensive asset management plan. This vital and necessary document enables our staff to make accurate and measurable recommendations to us as councillors and in turn, council is able to make effective and responsible decisions on assets and infrastructure. I look forward as well to continuing our working relationship with our MP Cheryl Lance and our MPP John Yakalaski, ensuring the issues of Renfrew County and our local municipalities and our communities are duly considered by our partner governments for sustainable funding of infrastructure. Partnerships with our federal and provincial governments are extremely important if we are to move continually forward. I have to commend both John and Cheryl for their continued effort and engagement in our community. Many events I attend, they're either there before me or they're there long after I leave. They are very well informed. I know both of them were tirelessly. A recent example is the County of MDF reopening to ensure first of all, there's some federal funding for the retooling of the clients and some training. And I know that John used his excellent rapport with Minister Shirelli to ensure that the electricity supplement is raised for many people. So thank you very much for that, John. I knew they sent chances publicly before. John has also led us in our discussions during the Endangered Species Act of Highway 417. So we're very fortunate to have both these individuals. Yesterday, we were in Ottawa speaking with John Moore, Chief of Staff. They were very complimentary of NG Lance involving in the goal process as well, recognizing that it's not a political process. It's a process of exchanging information. And they were totally heard of as a valued partner as are we as we move forward with those discussions. So I just wanted to bring that to council, to council and the public's attention that we are very well represented by our two representatives. And thank you, John, once again. To our staff, council through me requests you to continue to work hard on behalf of our community. We challenge you every day to be innovative, informative, thrifting, visionary. Our community depends on you to be sounding boards, interpreters of policy, experts and assistants in a variety of solution-focused meetings. Residents and citizens expect you to assist them, to protect them, to heal them, and to advise them. We and the community want you to respond to all these roles, challenges, requests, and expectations with grace and professionalism. And you truly do never disappoint. Thank you. We will continue to request you to provide some thoughtful papers and policy options and given clear goals, costs, and comparative on which we can make informed decisions. This year, with local councils facing dramatically increasing operating costs from leasing and our trust, just to name a few, we will no doubt be asking for different service models and expanded partnerships so that no municipality will be immune to fiscal challenges and pressures. Ladies and gentlemen, it is an honour that I sit here before you as your Warden for the County of Renfrew. I understand the immense responsibility you graciously bestowed on me. I will encourage and work with you to adopt and implement an agenda which allows us to move forward on many issues known and emerging. Together as councillors, staff, and community members, we will continue to make Renfrew County the best place to live, to work, to invest, and to play. 2015 will be filled with challenges, and you will no doubt demonstrate patience and appreciation for each other and our individual points of view and diverse goals. We will not always support each other's goals, views, or causes. I am confident we will always expect to find ourselves at the end of the session supporting our community. To each and every one of you, have a wonderful Christmas. And I hope an extremely busy, prosperous, and successful 2015. The County of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. Thank you, folks. It's somewhat challenging trying to stitch together some ideas and some thoughts which hopefully mirror your admissions and also things that I can, I know that I can get a nine-day recorded word of that too. So thank you. With that, I'd like to call on John Yakalaski, our MPP from Renfrew, the City Council. John always demonstrates he's much more than a great singing voice. So as with the rest of you, we wait with anticipation for reports. Thank you, John.
Well, thank you, Warden Neiman, and congratulations to you. Although I must say, this agenda is, when you're making good use of the paper, both sides, leaves me no room to make any notes, though. But I do want to, again, congratulate you and congratulate the council for their wisdom in giving Warden Neiman another year, at least, as Warden. We'll see next year. I also want to welcome all of the new members of county council. And there are many. I've never, this has been, since in my terms, your MPP, I've never seen anything like it. As that saying goes, may we live in interesting times. We are. We are. But I have every confidence in you that the people who sent you here have in you. I have every confidence that you will serve this county well while simultaneously serving your respective municipalities. And I want to point out to you that we've got a great staff. You've got a great staff here at Renfrew County. You also have five remaining members of council. Even if they tell you they're busy, don't be afraid to lean on them. They'll have a great resource to you. I want to talk about that staff for a minute, and I talk about your council, Warden Neiman. I was at Chalk River yesterday, Canadian Nuclear Laboratories, with Minister Bob Shirelli, Minister of Energy for the Province of Ontario, and Minister Yasir Nakvi, the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services. And it speaks, the point I'm making here, it speaks to the fact that I live in the real world. If you can't be on the winning team after a provincial election, make sure that the people who are on the winning team at least like to work with you. I think it's important for us to, as an elected member, for us on the opposition side, it's important for us to be committed and relentless when we're challenging the government, but never nasty or disrespectful. And that's how you build the relationships that I think can be successful for all of us. So I know that for the next foreseeable future, at least until the next provincial election, which is not going to come until 2018, it's important for me, on your behalf and on our county's behalf, that I continue to forge those relationships with the Ministers of the Crown at the provincial level. I don't think it's very common for Ministers of the Crown to invite opposition MPs to their private tours. But I'm thankful that I was asked to join them. And I do believe that it was extremely helpful yesterday. I'll take my hat off to Bob Walker and the staff. They did a tremendous job in making sure that the important issues surrounding Canadian Nuclear Laboratories were well understood by the respective ministers. It's one thing to have a meeting. It's another thing to take them to the facility and to be able to show them the tangible evidence and the work that is being done. And that is so important to us here in Renfrew County. And that's just one of the issues, as Warden Neiman talked about. Highway 17, the Endangered Species Act. The county produced two extremely valuable papers. One on the Endangered Species Act, another on the case being made for the extension of Highway 417. You send those into the ministries, but one thing that I make sure that I do immediately, the first letter I wrote after the provincial election of this past spring, the first letter I wrote was a letter to Stephen Del Duca, the new Minister of Transportation. I provided him also with, and questions in the House, provided him with copies just to make sure that he is reminded again of the case that the county is making. You people have done so much of the heavy lifting. You people are the ones that have been on the ground every day, making sure that you have all of your ducks in a row when it comes to making the business case. That is the best thing you can do in convincing a government at another level that you're not just playing politics. You're not just making the demand that your residents insist you make, because that's part of what we do. We respond to what our constituents are telling us. But you're actually putting meat on the bone and making it hard to argue against the case. And I think that is so very, very important for all of us here in Renfrew County. Those are two of the big issues when it comes to economic, the economic future of Renfrew County. That is Highway 417, Chalk River Nuclear Labs. The ESA, your paper on that was exquisite. And I'll tell you, it's very hard. And I honestly believe that sometime in the next four years, they're going to revisit this act. They're going to look at it because the damage that is being done is becoming far more apparent than any of the benefits that are being accrued from it. And I do believe that they're going to take a look at this because I think it's imperative that they do. We're going to keep making that relentless push for them to do that in a very respectful way because they need to do that on our, I think they need to do that on our behalf. What I want to say to all of the new councillors, the ones that have been here before, they know this. To the new councillors, my door is always open. I'm here to work with you and for you. It is my job to take your concerns to the provincial government. My door is open. I will make every effort I can to be fully accessible so that we can work together on these issues. I want to continue that, and I hope that over the next four years, because we're stuck with each other for at least the next four years, that I think that will become apparent to you. That that's the way I work, and that's the way I want to continue to work. I have enjoyed my relationship with the people at county council for the past 11 years. And I want to continue to build on that. And I think we can, together, we can become even stronger and move forward for the benefit of everyone that we serve here in Renfrew County. Thank you very much. And I would be remiss if I did not say, and to each and every one of you, a blessed and merry Christmas and all the best for 2015.
Thank you, John. That certainly reaffirmed our approach here through past wardens in Eskey, where we felt it was important to produce, and Raffwell, to produce knowledgeable papers and positions backed up by facts and information when we request a meeting with a minister or ministers of both levels of government on an issue. And I fully endorse what John has said about the Endangered Species Act. Our expectation is that it's going to take some time for the provincial government to reset that legislation. And our job is to keep giving information to them and providing the information about the limitations it's placing on economic development and wellbeing of rural Ontario. And that approach, I think, will bear fruit. It's a patient approach, and it's not easy at times, to be quite frank with you. But I think that's truly the way we'll have to proceed. And we can always count on John to present our information and with great eloquence and knowledge. So thank you, John. to present our information and with great eloquence and knowledge, so thank you, John. At this point, I'd like to call on Mayor David Reed from the Town of Ironpyre. Reed, please.
I remember four years ago coming up here, just newly elected as mayor of the Town of Ironpyre and having to follow MPP Yakubowski and being pretty well scared to death at the time. And I can say now, four years later, it's not a whole lot better. But I do appreciate, John, you didn't sing "Holly Jolly Christmas" and have to follow that. So anyway, thank you very much for inviting me here again this year. I do look forward to this opportunity to speak to county council. Having the Reeve represent Ironpyre here at the county table, I don't know how often I get a chance to come up here, so thank you very much for inviting me again. Ward Nemo, I'd like to express both my thanks and congratulations to you from Ironpyre Council, first for your recent victory as Reeve of the Town of Renfrew, and secondly for your renewed commitment to carry on another term as warden for Renfrew County. With so many new mayors and Reeves in Renfrew County, I believe the experience and leadership you bring as warden, along with the renewed enthusiasm and fresh ideas from your council colleagues, that working together, you'll provide great benefits to the residents and taxpayers of Renfrew County. I'd like to extend my sincerest congratulations to all the newly elected councils throughout Renfrew County, and especially to each of you here this morning, representing your respective municipalities on county council. I know we are well represented and together with the remarkable administrative staff here at Renfrew County, I know we are in good hands. I would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank Ironpyre Reeve Walter Stack. Having had the privilege to work with Walter over the past four years, I know firsthand the passion and knowledge he brings to our council table, and I know he'll do the same here at the county council table. With each new election resident throughout the Renfrew County get an opportunity to have a voice on what they want and what they expect from their elected officials. Some by way of show of a confidence express a desire to carry on a similar path, others by voting in and new councillors express a desire for some change. But regardless, whether the message is for continuity or the message is for change, there is also a clear message of new and increased expectations. So this morning, I would like to express to each of you my commitment and the Town of Ironpyre's commitment to work together with all of you here today and with our municipal partner, Siroc Renfrew County, to collectively do our best to meet those new and increased expectations of our respective residents. So thank you again for the invitation here this morning. On behalf of council staff and the residents of the Town of Ironpyre, I'd like to express our very best wishes for the holiday season and a happy and safe and prosperous 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. You, four years ago, carried off very well. None of us realized that you were nervous. You've always been a very poised and knowledgeable leader for the town when you represent them, and thank you for being here today. We really appreciate your comments and your participation today. It takes me great, I have great pleasure in presenting to you Mayor Joe Logue from the Town of Deep River.
On behalf of the council, thank you, on behalf of the council and people of Deep River, I want to extend warmest congratulations to our new and our returning members here at the county seat, such an important role that you play. And I think, if you'll allow me, a personal congratulations to Reeve Doncaster, who you may be aware was acclaimed. And Reeve Doncaster, I think it speaks to the role that you play in our community, the high regard that people have for the work that you have done and will continue to do on our behalf. And certainly as mayor, I'm looking forward to continuing the partnership and the working together that we have begun as members of council. It's an exciting time to be together and to be working together. We have a lot of challenges ahead, and although we are elected within our municipalities and within those boundaries, we represent a much broader community of interest. And I think that those partnerships and that shared challenge and passion that we have for the people, for the county, for our towns and our rural areas that we represent, that those partnerships are important as we go forward and in terms of working closely. And Mr. Warden, you spoke so clearly about our work that goes beyond this area and to the province and to the federal government as we look at the things that we need to get the work done to take care of the people who have charged us with that work. So I just want to share with you that in 2015, the Town of Deep River is celebrating 70 years of, since the time it was established as an ACL town, housing many of its employees and researchers. And so we're looking forward to that year of celebration, but as has been so clearly defined, we need to also use that year perhaps as a springboard to leverage our position as municipalities within this county as we go forward with the GOCO model and what it means to us in terms of economic growth and spin-off opportunities. So I look forward to working with everyone in this room, to the partnerships, to the shared challenges, and I think it's going to be exciting and it's going to be productive for all of us. So thank you so much for the opportunity to bring greetings here today to all of you and congratulations. And I want to take the last moment is to forward a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, and wish everyone safe travels wherever you may be with family and friends, and we look forward to the new year and the start of our four years together, and I know we'll get to know each other very, very well. Thank you so much.
I had the opportunity to meet, to meet the Alar Pete and Doncaster as well as the CAO on stormy night, short, I guess it was shortly after you elected, the very first snowstorm we had this fall, and had a great conversation about GOCO and moving forward and county services. So I know myself and council and staff look forward to working with you. Thank you for being here today. There's another gentleman about to be brought forward, is Mayor Don Eadie from the Town of Renfrew. Don's most grateful to us, so Mayor Eadie, if you could join us, please.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Ward Nemo for his reelection as warden. Also like to congratulate him as being the Reeve of the Town of Renfrew. I bring greetings from the Town of Renfrew, and I'll start off by saying Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and the best of holidays to everyone. It's been echoed here about working together. Ward Nemo, Mayor of Greater Manawaska, at one point in time called a meeting with four municipalities in our area to work together. We had that meeting, and I believe it was the start of something. I intend to continue that as much as possible. I welcome every municipality to work with the Town of Renfrew. If we're working on a project, don't be afraid to call. I'd like to congratulate all elected officials here, and I'd like to welcome the people from the Town of Renfrew, the staff, and Arlene Jemson, our councillor, for being here today. It's very important representation. It shows the Town of Renfrew, we're up for business, we're going to do business. You people at the county level here are so important. I learned so much here from the staff, former wardens, council members, et cetera, that it's an experience that I'll never forget, and I'm very, very thankful for it. Ladies and gentlemen, council members, thank you very much, and again, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mayor Eadie. I certainly hope you and I will continue to work together and enjoy doing so. You will note, we made some changes in seating, those of you who have been in the chambers before, and part of that was to ensure that we put newer members of council around some folks who had previous municipal experience. And as I said to Terry Miller this morning, I expect after four more terms as a councillor sitting beside councillor Sweet, then he'll be warden in 2027, so Terry, good luck. And present, we'd like to invite Mayor Hal Johnson from the Township of Whitewater Region.
Congratulations, Ward Nemo, and congratulations to all of the councillors that have been elected to county council. Congratulations to all of the staff members that get to put up with them. And thank you to the staff that have attended from Whitewater Region, and I'd like to congratulate you on behalf of Whitewater Region, possibly the nicest area in Renfrew County, could be biased. Today you start your first step in a very, very exciting journey. And looking around the room, I see a lot of very nervous excitement. After the speech from our warden, we realize how much is involved in all of the county business and action. A lot of people got here because they like to talk. Now you have to talk to be liked, and that is a big responsibility. We have to listen to the people that brought us here. We can't lose our perspective, ever. We have to carry on. Again, congratulations and Merry Christmas, still get to say that. All the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. He allowed me the privilege to speak to his council at their inaugural meeting, and it was, as I noted earlier, it was an exciting time for him, his council and the family, the family and friends who had supported them in the past and will no doubt lead to support them in the future. So thank you very much, Mayor Johnson. I'd like to now call on Mayor Mike Lemay of the City of Pembroke, the City of Pembroke and the County of Brentwood. I have a very unique partnership, and I have known Mayor Lemay for a number of years through a number of shifting responsibilities and job titles, so welcome Mayor Lemay.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Pembroke City Council, it's my pleasure to bring greetings and congratulations to you, the newly elected members of county council. We look forward to working with you as partners in our shared cost programs and also in any new ventures that benefit the citizens of the county and the city. We will collaborate with you in making sure that all Renfrew County municipalities receive their fair share of grants from both the federal and provincial governments. The city with its neighbors, Laurentian Valley and Penawawa, provide joint programs that benefit all of our residents, and I'm looking forward to growing a positive working association with Mayor Sweet and Mayor Bennett. In 2016, the city will study the feasibility of rejoining the county. I anticipate working closely with you as that study unfolds. So on behalf of the city council, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lemay. Two members of council that are fairly aware, after Thursday, when we have orientation on Wednesday, I think you're going to be quite startled at how entwined our relationship is with the city and how mutually beneficial it is to both parties, and it's a longstanding relationship, one that we nurture and we continue to gradually evolve it as time passes. And as I said, I'm very confident in Mayor Lemay's ability to be a good partner and a trusted, a trusted friend of the county. And I'd like to call upon Lieutenant Colonel Louis Le Pointe, he is Commander Gagné's second-in-command, and he will be accompanied by Chief War and Officer Bill Richards of Garrison Penaw.
He just waved him off.
Good morning. Ward Nemo, Justice Apis Marah, Member of Provincial Parliament, Mr. Yakubowski, Members of Council, Mayors, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to take this opportunity to extend my greetings from Garrison Penaw. I introduce myself already, Lieutenant Colonel Le Pointe, I'm the deputy commander for 4K Division Support Group, but more important to you, it's Garrison Penaw, I'm the deputy commander as well. Our commander is called Gagné, couldn't be here at the moment because he's away in business out of the area right now, but for all matters that you know, last year you had Colonel Orlock, who was a former commander of 4CDSG, came over to explain to you what the transformation was all about, that there was no more Garrison Commander at that time, but it's not exactly true. You still have a Garrison Commander, and your Garrison Commander is Colonel Gagné. He is a commander, he couldn't be here on first day today, so he asked me to deliver a message on his behalf. First of all, congratulations to all ECTR officials, and best of luck over the next, the next term. 2014 has been a busy year for Garrison Penaw. First, we've seen the closing of the Afghan mission. After 12 years of active involvement, we concluded through our National Devourner that was held on the 6th of May on Garrison Penaw and across Renfrew County and the country. We've also seen in last year the deployment of company groups in Europe, especially in Poland, in support of NATO reassurance package and measures. We've also had the deployment of members to support the operations against the ISIL in Kuwait and Iraq. And most recently, we've seen the departure of members of two failed ambulance to Sierra Leone to help with the fight against Ebola. On the home front, Garrison Penaw felt the effect of the event that happened in Saint-Jean -sur-Chelier and in Ottawa at the National War Memorial. It shook our nation. Following those events, the Garrison had to enhance its security posture and improve our vigilance. Since then, the measures have been reviewed, reviewed, and they will continuously be reviewed. However, the impact of our measures should not affect our community, our involvement also with the community. With regards training in the last year, as Ward Nemo said, we've seen the arrival of Chinook helicopters. Now they've got the full capability of helicopters on the ground, so they've reached their initial operating capability, and they're training right now to reach their full operating capabilities. What that will mean to the county is this is a unique resource. The only place in the country where you're going to find Chinook helicopter is here. Yes, it's a big bird, but there is great capability, be it at home or abroad, disaster assistance, humanitarian relief. This is a unique capability that we're really blessed to have here on Garrison Penaw. Also in training, we had two CMBG, Canadian Mechanized Brigade Group headquarters and units that completed their training and were placed in eye readiness since last July until next July. They are now in the position to be the government of Canada Armed Response to any situation in the world or in the country that might require our capabilities. In 2014, we've also accepted the delivery of a new building, the MHLH Building, as we call it, or the 450 Squadron, which is a major capital building. In 2015, we should see also the building of the new Canix. It's an over $14 million project that will be coming to Penaw. Also very soon, we should see in the near future, the construction of new buildings such as the one that allows the Canadian Special Operation Regiment, a campus on Garrison Penaw, and as well as a new medical clinic that will replace what we have right now and that is not adequate to serve our members. In 2015, Garrison Penaw will be celebrating its 110th anniversary. We will be marking this moment on our Garrison Family Day, and it will be held following the celebration of the 150th anniversary of the Town of Penaw, which will join together and partner with them to celebrate this special moment. Finally, it is not the new buildings or the equipment that makes Renfrew County a great place place to serve, it is its people. Thank you all for your engagement and your leadership. It's much appreciated. Chief Warrant Officer Richard, and I, and the 7,000 members who serve on Garrison Penawawa would like to wish you a Merry Christmas and a safe Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Please, please take our expressions of appreciation back to, back to Garrison Penawawa. And I've had many opportunities to be, to be on base, most recently in October, or September, I'm sorry, when I was the honorary chair for the United Way at breakfast, and it was a real pleasure to meet the members as they were coming in for breakfast and talk to them, and they, they were very, very engaged in our community, asking questions and offering comments and advice, and I really appreciate the effort they made to make me feel comfortable that day. And again, thank you for your efforts and the efforts of, of the staff at Garrison Penawawa. I must comment on the, on the hangar at Chinook facility, it's truly, it's a flattering building. I was there in August, and it's, it's quite a sight, everybody should take the opportunity to tour it, and I can't get over how thin blades are on the Chinooks to be quite frankly, paper thin, I don't know how they stay in the air, but anyway, so thank you very much for being here, and please take back our, our appreciation and, and words of encouragement. There are a couple people I missed during the earlier introductions, Dean Sorio, the CAO Laurentian Valley, who's with us today, former mayor of Laurentian Valley, and first honorary acting warden, Chad Wilson, longtime county councillor and longtime councillor from Laurentian Valley, Jim Sheed. Mayor Sweet mentioned our good friend Fred Blackstein. Fred, thanks for being here today. And of course, personally, needs no introduction, but I should anyway, former Warden Paul Curtis. Paul's a good guy, he was mind-slipping, but I have to explain that story. We, we were at a meeting, and so Paul spent most of the day trying to convince me we're going to Ottawa today as opposed to tomorrow, so I almost went to Ottawa this morning instead of coming to Pembroke, thank you, Paul. And longtime member of Laurentian Valley Council, George Hotkinson. George is also part of our GOCO team, and George and Paul and myself, this time last year, probably have just been returning from Columbus, Ohio, covered in ice this time, so thank you, George. And I hope I've managed to get everybody, if not stand up and yell, and I'll try to recognize you. Oh, I'm sorry, just Dean Fitzsimmons, CAO of Whitewater Region. Thank you. Good. Thank you. You're great there to keep them on track all the time. At lunchtime, Michael Barber has reminded me by text this morning that he's going to be taking pictures and headshots of, of county councillors for your, for your biographies on, online and all, all public utterances that you want to have your picture attached to, so if you can make yourself available during our lunchtime, that'd be great. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to appoint the striking committee, and the report will then be on your desk after lunch. So the striking committee will be chaired by Mayor, sorry, councillor Jennifer Murphy, vice-chairal councillor Glenn Doncaster, myself will be on that committee, councillor Kim Love, councillor Glenn McKay, and councillor John Ryan Wall will be the striking committee, and we will be meeting in the side room in about 15 minutes. And then we'll go through as quickly as we can, folks, and join everybody for lunch. Lunch will be served in the pine boardroom down the hall, which is, as soon as you go down here, you go straight to the end. And I think lunch will be about 11:30. It's here now, so lunch will be right now. So striking committee, possibly what we'll do then is we'll join everybody for lunch, and then we'll, we'll meet at about 10 to 12, and we should be back in here as councillor about 12:15. Okay, so thank you very much, everybody, and I hope everybody can join for lunch. Thank you. Thank you. I hope everyone has enjoyed their lunch. We'll have a report on the striking committee in a couple of seconds. As you can see, it's, from your first three hours here, it's an interesting place to be with lots of moving parts. We try to conduct our business, but at the same time, have some, have some fun and enjoy it. It makes it a leisure. And if, if you have any questions at any time, and I think John Yakubowski talked about it this morning, that part of what, what this chamber does is you form some relationships and some, some informal networks that allow you to seek out advice and, and just conversation about what's going on in your municipality or in, at your council, that you need some unheeded guidance so much, you need the opportunity to speak about it. And so that, I know councillor Sweet, Ms. Naski Moore, Murphy, staff and myself, I think that's part, partly what we see as our role, and thus have the, the idea behind some of the seating changes as well, is to give you the opportunity as, as a newer person to, to be able to know or ask what's going on, because we actually get a little, a little tactic, because we end up leaving the agenda around to fit people's schedules, or we end up, I guess it's the delegation coming in at the last minute. And so if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. You're allowed to ask questions up until October of 2018. By default, soon you know everything, and we're not going to answer any questions, but until that point, you can ask anything you feel that's time. Thank you. And with that, councillor Murphy, please. Oh, I'm sorry, just, and we're addressing everyone as councillor, because of the changes, so that we're not sure who's ahead of council now as a Reeve and as a mayor, and councillor Gibson informed me that they changed their title this morning, this year from, from Reeve to mayor, and so we made, I made a decision to address everybody as councillor, and now we don't have to stumble through, through titles. And it also reaffirms to us that we are members of this council and, and you're acting, you know, for the whole of the, our community and not our separate communities of origin. And so, you know, those were some conscious decisions that we made coming into, coming into the show. So with that, councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't really need a microphone, do I? Yeah? I do? Yeah, I do. Members of county council, the striking committee, wish you're at command as follows. Bylaws, a bylaw to establish the county committees for the ensuing year, resolution number STCC 15-0101, moved by myself, the chair, seconded by committee, that the following persons be the committees for the ensuing year, and that the first person named on each committee, where bold, be the chair, and that these be established by bylaw as attached in this session. The standing committee service follows, Finance Administration, Walter Stack, Peter Emo, Kim Love, Terry Miller, Jennifer Murphy, Debbie Robinson, Robert Sweet, Janice Missnaski Moore, with the vice-chair, Kim Love. With responsibility for Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, County and City Liaison Committee, and the Eastern Ontario Regional Network for the broadband project. Operations Committee, myself as chair, Michael Dunneque, Peter Emo, Deborah Farr, Gary Gruntz, Robert Kingsbury, Tom Peckett, vice-chair, Michael Dunneque. Development of Property, Chair Robert Sweet, with Glenn Doncaster, Peter Emo, Jim Gibson, Glenn McKay, Terry Miller, Tom Peckett, vice-chair, Glenn McKay. With responsibility for Atomic Energy of Canada Limited, Environmental Stewardship Council, CP Rail Corridor Advisory Committee, KMP Management Advisory Committee, Land Division Committee, MNR Forestry Management Plan, MNR Regional Advisory Committee, Municipal Advisory Committee for Land Claim, ODTA, Redford County Forest, Forestry and Wood Processing Committee, Redford County Agriculture Economic Development Committee, Shawwoods Outdoor Education Center. Health Committee, Chair Janice Missnaski Moore, with Glenn Doncaster, Michael Dunneque, Peter Emo, Robert Kingsbury, Kim Love, Chad Ryan Wall, vice-chair, Glenn Doncaster, with responsibility for the Board of Health, Health and Communities Partnership. Social Services Committee, Chair Debbie Robinson, Peter Emo, Deborah Farr, Jim Gibson, Gary Gruntz, Glenn McKay, Chad Ryan Wall, Walter Stack, vice-chair, Chad Ryan Wall, with responsibility for Redford County Housing Corporation. Striking Committee, myself as chair, Glenn Doncaster, Peter Emo, Kim Love, Glenn McKay, Chad Ryan Wall, Robert Sweet, vice-chair, Glenn Doncaster. I think, do you want, would you like me to go ahead and read the accros?
Yes, please.
Atomic Energy of Canada Limited Environmental Stewardship Council will be Robert Kingsbury. Board of Health Appointees, Glenn Doncaster, Michael Dunneque, Peter Emo, Janice Missnaski Moore. The County and City Liaison Committee, Peter Emo, Jennifer Murphy, Tom Peckett, Robert Sweet. CP Rail Corridor Advisory Committee, Peter Emo, Walter Stack, Robert Sweet. Eastern Ontario Regional Network Broadband Project, Robert Sweet. Health and Communities Partnership, Janice Missnaski Moore. KMP Management Advisory Committee, Robert Sweet. Land Division Committee, Deborah Farr, Robert Kingsbury, Kim Love, with the alternate, Jennifer Murphy. MNR Forest Management Plan, Gary Gruntz. MNR Regional Advisory Committee, Terry Miller. Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, Tom Peckett. Municipal Advisory Committee Land Claim, Peter Emo, Deborah Farr, Gary Gruntz, Chad Ryan Wall. Ottawa Valley Tourist Association Board of Directors, Glenn Doncaster, Glenn McKay. Redford County Agriculture Economic Development Committee, Terry Miller. Redford County Forestry and Wood Processing Committee, Janice Missnaski Moore. Shawwoods Outdoor Education Center, Debbie Robinson, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as the chair and committee members, Glenn Doncaster, Peter Emo, Kim Love, Glenn McKay, Chad Ryan Wall, Robert Sweet.
You've heard the motion, council? Discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's Kerry, thank you. Bylaws, please?
Sorry, Mr. Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by John Ryan Wall, that the bylaws listed on item 11 and attached here to Schedule A on the county council agenda dated December 16, 2014, be deemed read three times and passed.
Thank you. For your information, we can separate those two bylaws if you wish and vote on them separately. Are there any questions or comments about the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's Kerry, thank you. Reports of county officers? If there are any reports, could you stand in your place and make them, please? Seeing none? Notice of motion? Members' written motions? New business? There is no requirement for total meaning? Conformative bylaw? Councillor Missnaski, move this.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Tom Peckett, that a bylaw should confirm with proceedings of the council of the county of Renfrew at the meeting held on December 16, 2014, be now numbered, deemed read three times and passed. Bylaw number 3-15.
Thank you. You've heard the motion? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's Kerry, thank you. Yes, this time we take another motion. Commissioner Bignan Kingworth, motion to adjourn. Second, councillor Love. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's Kerry, thank you very much, everyone. Have a safe and Merry Christmas. We'll see you tomorrow and Thursday on the, on the wonderful history tour.